We're going to go ahead and bring the meeting to order. I would like to welcome Pastor Marshall Frye with Celebration Church for the opening prayer. Please have everyone remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards.
Pray with me. Father, we love you. God, we just thank you for your goodness and your mercies that are new every morning, Lord. God, I thank you for the leadership in this room, God, that you have placed. Lord, I pray for wisdom that is beyond our own understanding, Lord, but as we lean on you, God, and follow your will. God, we know that you make our paths straight, Lord. So, God, we just thank you for everything you've done in this city. We continue to do as we follow you, Lord. So, Father, we love you and thank you. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, council. Item number one is to approve the minutes of the September 25th, 2023 regular city council meeting and the minutes of that work session.
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number two is report of the mayor.
Good evening. Thank you, council. First, I want to make sure y'all know that we have hired a new human resource director. Her name is Hannah Noonan. She is actually not new to HR. She has been working for the City of Daphne for almost six years and started last week with the City of Fairhope. So, we are kicking off her tenure here with the benefits fair this week for our employees. So, excited to have Hannah and looking forward to continuing to work with her for years to come. That's going to be my hope. So, the other thing is Ballin Pops concert this weekend. It was a beautiful weekend to have a concert and just want to thank the Ballin Pops and Single Tax for helping us host Founder's Day in Henry George Park and for the concert that they gave. And today, we have Josh Turner here with us. Josh, you want to come up? Josh, as most of y'all probably know, is not only Lee Turner's son, right? Or now, he's Josh's dad, probably, if that's what usually happens when your children get to be older. But Josh kind of led the way for the FIT Court, the fitness facility that we're talking about placing down at the bay. And he led that effort and actually went out and applied for the grant and solicited additional funds for the city to be able to have that fitness court. So, Josh is here tonight to make a check presentation, I believe, on behalf of Single Tax and the Rotary Club and the Rotary Club. So, Josh, you want to say if you worked?
Sure. I don't know why I'd be speaking tonight, not one for public speaking, but I'm just honored to be able to do this for the City of Fairhope and do something great for the Rotary Club, the Single Tax and everybody. And I'm just honored to work with all of you, and I think this will be a wonderful project for our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we appreciate Josh and his efforts on this. And again, always appreciate the Rotary Club. They continue to make contributions to our community and Fairhope Single Tax. Obviously, we know what a great relationship we have with them and all the great things that they've done here in the City of Fairhope. So, Josh, thank you so much. We appreciate it. And that's all. Thank y'all.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. We now have public participation for agenda items. So, if you have something on items five through 35, now is your opportunity to speak. And please come forward, state your name and address for the record.
I apologize.
Good evening. Carol T. Bay, 98, Paddock Drive in Fairhope. And I'm speaking on number 21, which is trapped neutered release. Forty-five years ago, Fairhope was designated as a bird sanctuary. Sadly, two-thirds of the US birds have declined during this time, much of it due to loss of habitat, a decline in insects, but also because of cats. Scientists estimate that cats, which were introduced to this country, kill billions of birds a year, plus a lot of other small mammals and reptiles. Even well-fed cats instinctively hunt, and each animal suffers when captured. We wouldn't accept dog colonies. Why do we accept cat colonies? In the Everglades, pythons are captured because they're decimating the wildlife population. We wouldn't dream of having a TNR program for pythons. Why do we have it for cats? We should make a commitment to find permanent indoor homes for trapped and neutered cats. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. T. Bay.
All right. Anybody else here for public participation for agenda items five through 35? All right, seeing none, I will close public participation and go to item four, which is council comments. Councilmember L.
Yeah, I wanted to comment about you, Council President Robinson. I want to thank you for your service over the past year. You've done a fine job. You've been an excellent leader, and you're well-spoken, and I'm proud to serve on you. So, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Is he going somewhere?
I'm not retiring, by the way.
No, you'll be handing the gavel over to you.
This is my last meeting as council president, so. Councilman Martin?
Well, since Jack started giving me your flowers, I want to thank you for all the work you've put in. So, we'll give you your flowers while you're here.
Thank you.
Looking forward to continued works, my friend.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I'm thankful for the fall weather. Thank you, Lord.
Councilman B.
Well, I guess you get it out of boy?
Yeah. Yeah, don't be the one that doesn't give it to me. This will be a rough meeting for you.
I don't want to be on record for that. Actually, went to first Friday, first time, first time, but the heat bothered me up until this past Friday. For those that had missed it, it was a very fine night to get around. Very nice. Expect to see more people next right now. That's it.
Thank you, Kevin. Well, look, thank you, you guys, for the kind words. It's been a great year, you know, getting to spend this time as your council president, seeing just really firsthand all the work that goes into not just these meetings, but all the things that go on behind the scenes, leading up, all the work that's done, you know, getting to see the mayor spend a lot more time with her and getting to see really all the things that she has to deal with on a day-in, day-out basis that we don't really always get to be a part of, get to have to be a part of, that she deals with. And so, I'm really appreciative for the opportunity, and I'm glad to have been able to do it. On a different note, you know, this community experienced a tragedy last week, and we lost a child to an accident, and it's devastating for the family and it's really heartbreaking for the community. Anytime you hear of somebody so young losing their life, it's really puts a lot of things in perspective. And so, the things that we deal with in this room are really simple, important, but simple things. And I'd just like us all to keep that in perspective and keep those families that were affected by this tragedy in your prayers and just pray for the rest of our children because, you know, life is short and, you know, things like that are truly devastating. But with that, that's all the council comments I have. All right. Item number five is final adoption for an ordinance of annexation for the utility board of the City of Foley, DBA Riviera Utilities, and the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation for property located on Gifford Road Extension, Fairhope, Alabama, introduced at the September 25, 2023 council meeting.
We'll move for final adoption.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion for final adoption and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right, ordinance passes. Item number six is a final adoption of an ordinance amending ordinance number 1510, known as the Personnel Rules, Policies, and Procedures Ordinance, Section 7, Time Off From Work, amending Section 7.04 Sick Leave Pay Upon Retirement, option to convert unused sick leave to retirement service, introduced at the September 25th council meeting.
I'll make a motion for final adoption.
All right, we've got a motion for final adoption.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Clerk, will you call the question?
Place one.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Council president.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Item number seven is a resolution to approve the 2023-2024 city holidays.
I don't have a... so moved?
Okay.
I'll say.
I've got a motion and a second, and I know that you guys went through all these in the work sessions. So, if I run into something that requires discussion, y'all prompt me and let me know. All right, for the holidays, though, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item number eight is a resolution that the city council approves the following list for the Fairhope Police Reserve: Justin Rogers, Drew Crays, Alan Bishop, Chris White, and police chaplains Arthur Bossarge, Michael Coons, and Reggie Whitten.
I'll move to approve the list.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Beginning at item nine through 22, and then again on items 34 and 35, these are budget appropriations. I would entertain a motion to amend the agenda for... to go to consent on items nine through 22, 34, and 35. That allows the mayor to execute the contract on those budget appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion?
We'll need another motion to approve them all, correct?
Yeah, correct. And just for the public's understanding of this, these are all community affairs appropriations or donations that we have approved in the budget. We typically, in the past, have not done it this way, and anything that requires discussion is not really appropriate to do in this manner, but these are things that have already recently been approved that are not going to require any discussion. All right, so I've got a motion and a second to amend the agenda. Any further discussion? All right, clerk, will you... you need to call this? All right, all those in favor to amend the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Now, I will entertain a motion to approve items nine through 22 and 34 and 35.
Council president, I want to move to approve items nine through 22 on tonight's agenda and items 34 and 35. And I think it might even be appropriate, just to... we don't have to make 20 motions, but just list it real quick. I mean, just maybe state it. Would that be okay? Just vary, you know, the 20,000 to the downtown... 24,000 to the downtown business.
Yeah, I can...
Association. Would you want to read those?
Sure, I'm happy to.
Just to get us the one-liner?
Yeah, item nine is 24,000 to the Downtown Fairhope Business Association. Number 10 is 20,000 to the Eastern Shore Art Center. Number 11 is 10,000 to the Ecumenical Ministries. Number 12 is 5,000 to the Ballin County Trailblazers. 13 is 57,000 to the Farough Point Rotary Youth Club. Item 14 is 5,000 to the Farough... or the... I'm sorry, the Carehouse, Inc. Number 15 is $6,000 to the Fairhope Film Festival. Number 16 is $15,000 to the Mobile Bay National Estuary Program. Number 17 is $23,500 to the Eastern Shore Chamber of Commerce. Number 18 is $3,000 of in-kind services... hold on, I'm sorry. $3,000 in appropriation and 8,400 in in-kind services to the Ballin Pops. 19 is $10,000 to the Fairhope Pirate Booster Club. 20 is $20,000 to the Ballin County Economic Development Alliance. 21 is $5,000 to the Safe Harbor Animal Coalition. 22 is...
Use of facilities?
Use of facilities for Thomas Hospital. And then 34 is an in-kind donation of $2,000 to the Fair... and use of the Fairhope Civic Center for the Dogwood Trail Pageant Scholarship Program. And then 35 is $2,500 of in-kind donation for the FIF golf tournament.
So moved. Have we made them?
I think I have.
We do have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you for listening.
Yeah, no, thank you.
I want to get it on the record.
All right, counsel, I do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And counsel, thank y'all for being willing to entertain that. I know it's unusual, but I think that's a clean way to handle things like that. Maybe in the future, can't... it can't be done on all expenditures because a lot of those do require discussion, even though... even if they are in the budget. But when possible, that's a... seems like a pretty efficient way to move through this. All right, item number 23 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the Intelligent One Field GPS Paint Robot from Turf Tank for a not-to-exceed amount of $52,700.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just want to mention that in the work session, this was talked about by Pat, and he told us that it was going to save, you know, could be hundreds of men.
Man, absolutely.
Anxious to see how this works out. Pretty cool.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 24 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the annual subscription for weather forecast and warning service from USA Coastal Weather Research Center with a not-to-exceed amount of $4,200 and authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract.
So moved.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 25 is a resolution that the City of Fairhope approves the procurement of the annual support renewal for the Cronos Timekeeping System from Cronos, Inc., with a not-to-exceed amount of $28,810.99.
So moved.
Or second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It may be our last time we see this. I will not be sad to see them go.
All right, counsel, all those in favor of item number 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 26 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Axis Engineering Group, LLC, for professional services for design services for utility GIS interface Phase 1, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $17,000.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
You missed the discussion, council president, but just like I said, you don't ever hear me say this, but that sounds like a real deal right there.
I might have to watch that to make sure I don't see... I don't hear Jack say that very often. All right, well, good. That makes me feel 10 times better about it. All right, guys, I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 27 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Krebs Engineering for professional engineering services for water distribution system capacity expansion, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $495,000.
So moved.
Second.
All right, counsel, we've got a motion and a second. I know Krebs was here during the work session. Just briefly thoughts on that.
Yeah, we talked about this. I think we talked about it extensively. We actually talked about futuristic and what we need right now, which is the 495, which the mayor's doing a great job. And I think Krebs has a good idea of what we need right now.
As far as immediate needs, yes.
And what Jack talked about was maybe not kicking too far down the road, doing the research, the feasibility, but actually not turning dirt until we know for sure what that looks like.
Right.
So, I think everybody was in agreement with that.
Okay.
Quick question. Is that, you know, in their presentation, they talked about Phase 1 and a Phase 2, and I'm just trying to look in the letter. Does that include both phases? I think it's the hydraulic. Let's see. This... I can tell you right here.
If you look in the memo, Councilmember L, it outlines it's the production and development of well 8B, number 13, and then the pilot bores, and then the water treatment plant expansion at well 1, and then the water distribution hydraulic model.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
And it also provides construction review service for each one and bid packets.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure of which... if those are... if that's all Phase 1 or if that is a Phase 1 or Phase 2.
It's portions... it's actually portions of each.
Okay.
Yeah, portions of both.
And so, to be honest, what I was trying to get at was, you know, how much of that, you know, this cost versus what they're managing, you know, back to that, what is the fee schedule here? And I was trying to put a dollar figure on what they're managing. It is 495. If the... there is one, though, that's a good indicator. If, you know, the $6.5 million for the 24-inch water main, although that's just putting pipe in the ground, it's not a whole lot of engineering there. Just trying to get a dollar figure for the value of what they're managing. We had this discussion sometime before, and I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm trying to caution... not cautiously, I guess, not say the amount that they've estimated or what we have budgeted. But this is less than...
We have to bid it out, yeah.
This is less than 10% of either one of those numbers.
That's what I'm looking for.
Yes. Less than 10% of either one of those numbers.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, counsel, I've got a motion and a second. All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 28 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Jackson Thornton Certified Public Accountants and Consultants for Professional Services to evaluate water and wastewater system development charges, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $12,000.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Counsel, any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 29 is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of Sawgrass Consulting, LLC, for professional engineering for the Dolleve Creek Crossing Gas Main Leak Repair, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract with a not-to-exceed amount of $21,900.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 30 is a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute extension number 1 for RFQ number PS01922, Professional Consulting Services for Grants and Grant Management with Grant Management, LLC, with all terms and conditions as original bid award, and extends the contract until October 17, 2024 with a not-to-exceed amount of $24,000.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Just going to say, as we're blowing through some of these, these are all discussed in detail in the work session tonight.
Thank you, Jack. All right, so we have a motion and a second on item 30. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 31 is a resolution that Mayor Sherry Sullivan is hereby authorized to execute extension number 1 for three-year pest control for city buildings with Red Pest Solutions for an additional one year to extend the referenced contract until October 20, 2023, with same terms and conditions as the original bid award, the cost not to exceed $12,371.4.
So, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 32 is a resolution that the Fairhope Educational Enrichment Foundation's request to allow its 2023-2024 annual premium sponsors, limited use of the pavilion located on the leased K-1 center premises, is approved as outlined in the attached 2023-2024 sponsorship form for bronze, silver, or gold.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item 33 is a request from Marsha P. Jordan, Executive Vice President of the Ballin County Home Builders Association, requesting permission to put up directional signs for their annual parade of homes scheduled for two weekends, October 14, 15, and October 21, 22, 2023.
Council president, I'd like to make a motion to give them permission, but I want to put the caveat on there that they are not to put them in the flowerbed. I think it looks bad if, you know, we allow them because that's one of the really, you know, important, I think, keep-out places, and we got a lot invested in that, and surely certainly they'll understand that and can find another place in the right way.
Okay, understood, and I would agree with that. So, counsel, we have a motion by Councilmember L with that caveat of no directional signs in the flowerbed. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, items 34 and 35 have already been completed. Item 36 is public participation for non-agenda items. So, if you have something, now's your opportunity. Come forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
I practiced it on to make sure. You're going to receive something else in addition to this, which will take longer, you know, so anyway, I appreciate your service, too. My father was a city councilman and for several years in Ballin Battery. That was 50 years ago, and I can remember all the... I learned about all the... what was happening in the city from him almost every evening. He was probably a city councilman over 20 years, okay? Anyway, so good evening. And at the Pops concert that some of you may have gone to last night, I was reminded of several icons that we value in the city. But one of the icons I looked at, looking out over the pier, is an icon I think we really kind of neglected, Nester City Pier. On April 18th, I wrote you a letter and, well, whatever you call it online, about the marina and because the mayor wants to... where the renter wants to convert it to a transient marina. And after four decades of serving the boating families in Fairhope, and a transit just means they're not going to lease out any slips at all. There are 36 slips in there. And I told you at the time, and I don't know if you heard this, there were 177 families on the waiting list for boating slip in Fairhope. There's 36 there, 87 at the other marina. When you approved the Blind Tigers release in July of 2022, and I imagine they were close to the number two, so there was...[1712.41] and I imagine they were close to number two, so there was, to me, that showed a need, there was a need for this amenity that I, one of the reasons I moved here was the amenity of the harbor, and I kept my boat out there in the marina for several years. I mean, that's many years ago, 50 years ago, for 10 years I kept it out there. The lease, and I didn't have, when I talked to the mayor and one of the city councilmen, I didn't have the lease with me, and then I did get that from the, I didn't get the, to get the lease anyway, and so it's very clear that the new tenant will continue to operate the Fairhope Marina, this is a marina, marina amenity, enjoy with the families and taxpayers in Fairhope for many, many years. And we're talking about a boater, we're not talking about just one person, for me, it would be represent seven people, my grandchildren, my kids, and my son and I traveled in Coates Canal for many, and his buddies for many years. And I kept my, I kept my boat down there, okay? There really, and there's no such need, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, Mayor, but really is no such thing as a transient marina. There's, what it is, now that means that like, say you don't rent out anything, whatever, and it all it means in this case, probably would just mean a marina, the boat can come up and dock and have a meal. In fact, I did get in touch with him, Thomas, and we did talk about that, and that's really what he wants, he just wanted boats to be, he wanted a nice place for his boat to be able to come up to, and to give away 36 slips for that, to me, is a little overboard. Now, a lot of marinas in the area have transient slips, they don't do the whole marina, they have transient slips, and that's when you travel on Coates Canal, and you go in, it has full hookups, water, heat, and water and power, and if you're lucky, you may add a hot shower, you have that too. I checked with City Clerk's office, and I was told there was no amendment to this lease, it may be, but it's not on file. And what I, what I've, what I'm gonna suggest, and I've always believed that the restaurant and, and the, the marina should be separate, separate leases, it never made sense to me to have them both together, and I think really, I think, Thomas would probably agree with this now, you'd have to talk to him, Mayor. We did, we did talk, it's been about six weeks ago, he talked, we talked about that, but, and really, the city, you've, my, you've given up thousands of dollars you could have gotten every month, you know, six, eight thousand dollars a month from boaters, I just believe it will be full. And so what I've been suggesting is that what you're going to get is that you could, you could list 36 of them, ask him, what does he need to do what he wants to do, he wants to rent some boats, he wants a nice place for boaters to come up, so ask him what he needs to do, and then the rest of those, you need to, or lease those out, and to, and you, $300, you know, probably a lease, I'm saying most of those would be 25 to 30 feet there, it's not, it's not a marina for a lot of large boats, okay? He told me that he asked the city to move pilings, and the city would not do that, and so they wouldn't move the pilings, I don't know what that's about, he said the city would not, city engineers would not do that, he won't do that, he also said there was problem with electricity, so I don't know anything about that at all. He told me that that would cost, he would have to spend a half million dollars to be able to allow boats to spend the night, okay, is what he told me, okay? Now, he also has submitted another plan, I don't know where he submitted these plans to, and so he said he submitted another plan, and then to be approved, he hasn't heard yet, but not for overnight stays, that's not it.
Let, let, I gotta stop, you're three, I gave you about, I tried to give you about five.
I know, I tried it.
But, but, but there's, there's a couple things, obviously, this is something you can, I think you're planning on giving us some more information.
You're gonna get this, you're gonna get a more extended version of it, okay? I practiced it at home, but while I say if I could, you won't be able to understand me, I can talk very fast, you wouldn't be able to understand me.
Sure.
So I'm gonna do that, okay?
And I appreciate that, and, and, and thank you for, can I get your name again?
Russell Pauls.
Okay, thank you, and, and we look forward to hearing from you.
Well, so you'll get more.
The rest of the story.
Yeah, the rest of the story, and this is one of the things I'm gonna send you too, in my con, in my talk too, with the, with the tenant, you tenant.
Can I address that a little bit to the council president? Sir, if you don't mind, I wanna address that a little bit, so the revenue, if, if, if the owner of the Blind Tiger kept the lease the way it was, they managed the marina, and they profit share with the city, the city gets a very, very small portion of that, it's, it's pennies on the dollar.
Right.
Now, every time we have a hurricane, the city has to go down there and, and rebuild the water supply, rebuild the electrical supply, and it's hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we're losing a tremendous amount of money by doing that, so that's why we agreed to, you know, the transit. The other problem we have is, is if, you know, if you had a boat there, people decided to use our marina as a dumping grounds. We had so many boats that were abandoned, that sunk, we had environmental hazards there, we had to worry about, we had, we spent, you know, not hundreds, but tens of thousands of dollars removing all those boats, and so for that reason, you know, I would love to tell you that we would have a nice facility that wasn't gonna get destroyed by a hurricane, but it cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to provide that, and with every storm that comes through there, we would have to, we would be obligated to that marina manager to rebuild that marina, and so if this gives us an opportunity to get out of the marina building business every time we have a, it's not just hurricanes, it's tropical storms.
How do I address all of that?
Yeah.
So you told me to come to the city council, how do I, how do I get, how is it transparent, how do I address all that? I only have three minutes here, how do I address all that, I'd like to know, because I have an answer to all of the things you just mentioned, okay? And also, one of those, that's his poor marina management, the owners of those boats should have insurance, and it covers the city, the city has to be on that, the, the last tenant should not have paid $40,000 to take those boats out, shouldn't have done it. This marina did what it was supposed to do, the main structure of the marina wasn't damaged, it was just the wood that was all damaged, and there are ways to do that power and electrical to make it sacrificial, it shouldn't have cost what you're talking about. Okay, so I don't believe that went into the marina, so I think the marina's got a bad rap. But how do I address it, how do I find, how do I get a solution?
Then you also have to go back to the sub, the lease that we had with the restaurant owner as well, as they are the marina manager, so they can ultimately decide the use of that.
And, and.
That, that marina comes with the restaurant, and we had a chance to get out of that business, you know, I think we got, we chose to get out of it. Anyway, that, that's a little bit of history.
Yeah, I'm aware of all that, okay, I'm just saying there is a lot of boaters out there disagreeing with you, that's all.
Look, I sympathize with you, I'm a big boat, I mean, I, I sympathize with you, but it's a, it's a, it was a, it was a money pit for the city.
Well, and let me just ask this question, and I think I'm right, the Blind Tiger assumed the lease that was already in existence, so that was a lease that was entered into originally when?
Yeah, from 15 to 20 years ago.
Yeah, so, so, so you're really talking to a group that wasn't sitting here when that was entered into, because that was, they, they assumed that lease that was entered into 15, 20 years ago, which gave them those boat slips.
Well, that's, that's, well, the lease says that they're gonna rent out the boat slips to people, that's what it says.
Right, but that's, that's, that's assuming the, they're assuming the lease that, that was already in place of the restaurant owner that was there.
Right now, he's in violation of his lease, he's not following it.
Yeah, it's, right, it's, it's their choice under the lease to, to operate or not to operate.
No, it's not, I'm sorry, I just agree with you, it's not on there, okay? So I've, I've got a meeting with my attorney this week, it's not, it's not there, okay, so it's just, I can understand what you're saying, but there needs to be some way that I can talk to people, I don't know how I can, how am I supposed to do that? Okay, I, I represent a lot of people, I mean, I don't, legally I don't, but a lot of people agree with me, a lot of boaters, like I told you, it's not one or two people, but a lot of people, okay, so now you, you know, the marina, the devil's supposed to do, you've spent money, but a lot of that should have been the owner doing that, of those boats, okay? And you can, you can put in the power, and you can put in the plumbing, that can be sacrificial, that won't cost that, and you got city people that can do it. They've ordered repairs of wood, I talked to them, and they were dumbfounded.
Let me just ask you a question real quick, when you say that's not in there, are you saying that it's not in the lease from 15 or 20 years ago, that the restaurant lessor is, gets to choose whether to operate the marina or not?
No, it's not there. It, it spells out, he's gonna operate, it's a, it's marina, he told me I'm not operating the marina. He, when he signed the lease, it's in there, first page, he's gonna operate a municipal marina that's there, okay?
Okay, so you're, you're not, you're not disagreeing that he has the authority to do with what he wants with those boat slips down at the marina, or down at the pier?
He doesn't, not, not by his lease, now you may wanna run it, go ahead and do an amendment or whatever.
You're, you're saying that the lease requires him to operate it as a municipal?
Yes, that's what it says, that's what it says in front page, if you read it, that's what it says. I didn't have a copy of the lease when I talked to you before, I didn't have that, and I don't. Well, but, but here, you, you know, he doesn't have to repair all the, excuse me, hurricane, he is, he still doesn't repair that, you're still gonna have to repair it, it doesn't matter, one, I get some money for it, it's ready to lease. Oh, I'll send you this, I met with the Corps of Engineers, and they know nothing about what he talked about, nothing. They told me all they need, all it needs is one piling repaired, that's all. At first, he said, well, maybe we do need to get them all, I said, no, no, I said, just one piling, I said, show him pictures, so I can give you his name, who I met with, and there's no, there's no, the lease or leasing met with the Corps and A.D.M., whatever, but there's nothing, no plan, it's all he said is they had some notes, and so, you know, I can request those, but it's just gonna be some notes, whatever.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Good evening, my name's Doug Greenard, I live here in Fairhope. It's good to be able to come and exercise our First Amendment rights. Some governments, even within our country, are not allowing that, especially at the federal level, so this is a blessing, thank you. It was approximately a month ago that a group of us came to discuss the Fairhope Public Library and books that are in the youth, young adult section. I'm wondering, because at that time, the challenge was put forth to you, each of you, and I'm disappointed too that Mr. Conyers isn't here tonight, as he being the liaison to the public library. But we asked if any of you, over the next weeks, month, and I'm wondering if since that time, any of you have gone to the library and taken a look through the young adult section to witness what we shared with you? You have?
I, I have, and I've looked into some of the books, and I have looked into, you know, do they have, and I know that Councilman Martin did as well, looking to whether these books have a card from Library of Congress, which the books in question did, because there were some questions of the legalities of those books.
Very good, so you've attended, you also, sir?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful, and all of you have, and Mayor, you have as well, well, that's very encouraging, we thank you for doing that, very much so, because obviously, it's an issue that needs to be addressed. Again, I mentioned Mr. Conyers as being the liaison to the library, it has come to our attention, he has not attended any of the library board meetings in several years, so I wanted to hear his response on that here tonight. Yes, ma'am?
He has, he attended the last couple meetings, and he's been a lot of his help.
Okay, very good, that's good information, that was not brought to our attention. In light of all of this, I do want to mention that Fairhope Ordinance 1477 prohibits sexually oriented businesses within 1,000 feet of a school, a park, and other facilities, such as that, yet within the walls of the library, this material is being distributed, so that would be in direct violation, I would think, to the actual law, which is Ordinance 1477. More troubling is the $900,000 that has been given to the public library by the city. So these are certainly issues that we're going to continually be discussing with you. We appreciate you addressing these issues, and we'll be back to further discuss them at a future time.
Can you give me that ordinance number again?
1477.
Yes, 1477.
Thank you, I do appreciate it.
Do appreciate it, thank you.
My name is McKenna, I'm a resident here in Fairhope. I'd first like to start off by thanking the council members for being here tonight and for sacrificing your time to be here. Secondly, I would like to bring up an article that's been recently published. As you probably remember, I and a couple of my fellow students came here, a couple meetings ago to speak, but we haven't really attended since. The article, published by Alabama Political Reporters, stated that we are working off a script. Though I cannot speak for the other students as to where they got their sources, I can speak for myself. My speech was a revised version of an eight-minute-long speech that I wrote for a debate class last year. Lost my spot, I'm sorry. I put countless hours of work into compiling 15 pages of research for that assignment, which has prepared me only for that, but for this conflict as well. And I'm beyond grateful that Stephanie Williams has made a statement saying that she had no part in writing the speech, and gave credit where it was due, but I hate that conclusions were jumped to and that my school and fellow students were brought down just because misinformation and someone's words were twisted. We want all citizens, regardless of age, to feel comfortable speaking before the council, and for them to be able to trust that what they have to say will not be discredited, no matter what side they're on, thank you.
Thank you, as, as somebody who's sat up here for seven years, I can appreciate when your words are twisted and maybe not reported exactly as you said them.
Good evening, city council members, my name is Vivvy Hecker, I'm 15 years old, and I live in Fairhope, and I would like to speak, or I'd like to make a statement on behalf of the library situation. If 12-year-olds can't go into an adult bookstore to buy pornography, or buy alcohol, or drive a car, or buy a gun, or have physical relations with someone over the age of 16, why are they allowed to read adult, ungodly materials in a very unmonitored, accessible library setting? I have a library card, and I can go in without my parents knowing. Is 12 the new age of majority in Fairhope, Alabama? Does the city council want this on their conscience? Thank you so much.
Thank you. And, and let me say this, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's been said in a meeting before, but I didn't, I didn't really think it needed to be said. I don't think there's anybody sitting up here that wants inappropriate material to be distributed to children. I mean, I don't, I mean, is that, is that a fair assumption?
Yes.
Again, one I did not think needed to be made, because it's quite obvious. But again, we are talking about an independent library that is not controlled by the city of Fairhope. If I was deciding what books were put out, I may put out something different, okay? But I do not decide, neither do any of the members of this council, what books are put out or disseminated by the Fairhope Public Library. I mean, that's, and, and not to, but, but does the city council want that on their conscience? Again, that's not a decision we get to make. I would love for you to.
I think more than anything, it is our concern that inactivity, which we have not seen, we have, obviously, by your responses here tonight, you've shown us that you've taken a concern actively over the situation here. However, when something is funded, it speaks that it is being supported. So our concern is obviously manifold, but greater than that is to hand someone money, the library, or whomever it is, is in a sense condoning that activity. So I think there has to be some talk right now about withholding or pulling back funds until this situation is rectified. I don't think it's fair that our tax dollars are supporting something that is putting pornography in the hands of young people, period.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and just to address that in council, I'm happy to pass the baton, but what I would say is, we have been funding the library for how many years? Decades?
Doesn't matter.
I, I, I get it, but, but again, to, again, address the idea that, that the city council would condone the distribution of pornography in a library is, is really an absurd statement, in my opinion, to make, because we do not, again, decide what is distributed, purchased, or put out at the Fairhope Public Library.
Maybe that needs to change.
Good evening again, council members and Mayor, Stephanie Dernan, Fairhope resident. My question is, does the city council appoint the board members of the library? Or does the mayor appoint the board members of the library?
They're recommended by the library board.
And then the city council confirms them?
Mm-hmm.
So there might be a consideration at this time, or a thought or a conversation that needs to be happening about who those board members are and how they're steering that ship? And is their leadership the way we want that ship steered at the library? My concern also, just reading the library board of minutes from June, we don't have the ones from August, because apparently it takes two months to approve, or they have to be approved at the next meeting, so we don't get to see what was written, so I'm not sure if Mr. Conyers was there in August or not, but I know at the June, the June board meeting, it was notated that Mr. Conyers, the city council liaison to the library, had not been there for about a year. Ms. Dean started by reporting that a Pride Dates display in the teen and youth areas that included LGBTQ posters and books that had caused some concern from a few patrons who were against having the displays so prominently open to all the young people who frequent the youth department in the library. The posters in the youth area were removed, the book displays remained. Tamara has talked with the head of the youth department about the use and display of posters within the library. On Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, Tamara received a phone call from Erica Thomas, a reporter with the online news service 1819 News, asking what she knew about the LGBTQ books in the teen section of the library. She responded by reminding, this is referring to Ms. Dean, by reminding Ms. Thomas that our public library provides free access to information for every patron, and that the library believes library believes in the freedom to read and follows the American Library Association's Bill of Rights. The Board of Trustees are in full support of Tamara's response, the freedom to read, and the library Bill of Rights. So I would argue there that if you're confirming board members for a library that aren't on board with your own personal, and thank you for making that statement earlier, that you are not in agreement with that, because we had not heard anything from anybody, then I would hope that your moral compass would direct you to maybe make some revisions in that board, if they are not doing what you would think would be a good job for this. I would also ask the city of Fairhope to come out and say that they would recommend that the Fairhope library remove itself from the American Library Association membership. Thank you all.
Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, I will close public participation and entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All right.